Okay, guys, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting going. Try to get out of here as quickly as possible. And we're gonna do roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Labar?
Here.
Councilmember Alfieri?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
I'm here.
Councilmember Nakai?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
I am.
Thank you.
Alleged allegiance. All right, and we've got a new council member, so we are here to go over our board positions. Did everyone get a handout of what the positions are? Okay, and Stephanie, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, and if you have something to say, just, just talk, because I can't see you unless you talk.
Will do. Thank you.
Yeah. One thing, I'm the lead on the PPACG, and I just asked Councilmember Zuluaga if he would like to take the lead, because I'm getting too busy to handle it. So, and then we need an alternate, so, I don't know.
Thank you.
We need a motion and a vote to appoint him for PPACG. So, okay, so for that, if you all are comfortable.
Well, why don't you just open it up, see who else has gotten an interest?
Yeah, is there, because we also need an alternate.
Yeah, I can do the alternate.
Okay, so, because I'd like to just not work with that right now, because I've got too much going on, so, okay.
Mayor Protem, typically, if we just have consensus.
Yeah.
You know, if we have full consensus, we don't have to take a vote on each of these. Yeah, we've, in the past, that's the way we've done it, but it's up to you.
I'm okay with just consensus if you guys are, so.
So for PPACG, then, I have Councilmember Zuluaga as the primary and Councilmember Nakai as the alternate?
Yes.
And we have council consensus on that?
Yes. Okay, so then, I know Stephanie's on Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, and she'd probably like to keep that. She probably doesn't mind that board at all.
Correct. Rob asked me to make one correction. We have it down as 6:00 PM. It's 4:00 PM on your sheet. That's the time of those meetings.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All right, I'm comfortable staying with the utility advisory board, unless somebody else is desperate to be on it, because they don't meet very often, and Kip just keeps me up to date when I need to be up to date on it. So, is that okay with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Main Street, Councilmember Zuluaga, you'd like to stay on there, or would you like to hand it off?
It's, it's up for bids.
I wouldn't mind Main Street if that's okay with you.
You'd like to do Main Street?
Okay, I have Councilmember Nakai now as the Main Street liaison.
CML Policy Committee. I don't mind keeping that one.
And I don't mind staying on as the alternate.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
And we've got Parks, Rec, and Advisory. Bet Councilmember Case doesn't want to give that one up.
I love it.
I wouldn't even ask.
It's great.
All right.
We, we get to do things that people have fun doing.
Yeah.
We make fun.
I know, it's nice. That's a nice board to be on. All right, the CIF Fund hardly ever meets, but anybody, Councilmember Case, you want to hang on to that one?
I'm fine if no one else wants it.
I'm good.
Don't even know what it does.
CIF funds are seizure monies. There's seizure monies that are taken during, I think, is it drug money? Drug raids and things like that, I believe, and they have a board of the area agencies that really direct the spending and use of those seizure monies. And so, they have policies in place, so they don't meet very often. In fact, not since I've served on council, so.
So it's not an easy one, but it's an easy one to keep in terms of you don't meet very often. All right, and then Historical Preservation Committee, I know Councilmember Neal was on that.
I just was read on to the history and given the orientation on Saturday, and I love it. I'd like to stay on that one.
All right.
Mayor Protem, before you continue, only because there's only one left.
Yes.
I wanted to just bring to your attention that the next council meeting I'm going to be bringing to council, talk, to talk to council about the charter review, that we need to start the time to look at the charter, if there's anything we want to bring to the election.
Okay.
That Charter Review Committee will need a liaison, and that's the only reason I mention it this evening.
Okay.
They'll meet on the what?
Pardon me?
They will meet when?
We get to, we get to pick that when we form the committee.
And there'll be representation from council?
Yes, we'll have citizens, council members, and staff, but we'll need a council liaison for that committee. So I figure while you're assigning, we might want to assign someone to that this evening as well.
Yeah, we could do that. Is there somebody that would be interested?
I wouldn't mind. I've actually been going through the charter already, so I wouldn't mind doing that.
And I apologize, but I would actually be very interested in doing that again, as I had served on it during Glasgow round.
Right.
Think if, remember, didn't we have three council members as representatives and four community members? So we'll have room.
Correct, but as you'll recall, Mayor Carr was our liaison, so he reported back to the council. So we need one person to be the liaison, the others can be, join us on the committee.
Okay, so Stephanie served on it last time and did do a really good job. I know, Catherine, I know you're new, but I know you're not new to the charter either. But council, do we want to do a vote, or, or do we have a consensus of who should be? I'm, I'm a little partial to making it Stephanie, just because she knows it really well.
I don't have a problem with that.
To be the liaison, and then, I mean, almost all of us can participate anyways, but.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
Yeah, I would, I would go ahead and support Stephanie as the liaison, since she's been doing that. And then Catherine, you pick up the second seat.
Yeah, because Stephanie is also aware of some of the stuff we had been, we had tried to get on the ballot last time, so she can come and let all of us know what the old news is, and then we can start focusing on what the new news will be as well. Sure. Okay.
Did you want to be on there as a third? Did you have?
On the charter? Not particularly.
Oh, come on, it's fine.
Did you want to?
No, I have enough on my plate, so, you know.
Well, do, we need three total when we get time?
We don't have to have three. It was just that Val participated as mayor, or, no, Val participated.
He was the chair and, and member. It was myself, and then we also had Carol.
Carol was with us too. I don't, yeah. Did Carol quit council, though?
Hillary, you were on there, sorry. Mayor Protem Labar, I think you were on there.
I was there too, yeah, and Carol was there, but I think Carol had already quit council. So she was just there as a citizen.
Oh, okay.
So.
And thinking about it, if nobody else wants that third place, I'd do that one, you know, because I've been looking at, you know, municipal codes, I've been reading all kinds of documents, so yeah, I would be the third one.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can just have in mind that it'll be Stephanie as liaison, Councilmember Neal, and Councilmember Nakai. Be the three council total.
Perfect.
Okay.
And know that you can attend if you want to sit in on a meeting or something.
Yeah.
I, I think I sat in on a couple last time.
Okay, all right, last but not least is DDA, and we have Councilmember Zuluaga in that position.
I'm happy to stay there unless there's some cause for me not to.
That is one I've been kind of waiting on since, I know when we first, since Val appointed you, or we, we, the council appointed you, I've been kind of holding back. I would like to, to try it for just a little bit, see how it goes, so I'm interested in that one.
Council, any discussion about that?
I would support Rusty Neal in that position as well.
I guess a comment I'd make about that is that we've seen such a huge shift in the DDA in the last, with the appointments. I would caution us to just steady on as it, as it's going there. There's, there's a, there's quite a bit to understand about it, and I'm not saying that you couldn't certainly get your head around it, but I think there's, just for stability for the city, if there's not a cause, and it kind of looks in the charter that the cause is not showing up for meetings. And is there a problem with the reports that council has received over the course of my serving as the liaison?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll be very upfront about it. I've been uncomfortable with some of the, the votes that you've taken. It, it appears you're, you're voting how you would like the votes to go versus as a council liaison, voting how the council might have wanted some of the votes to go. So, yeah, I've been a little bit uncomfortable with some of your votes.
Mayor Protem Labar, may I?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the comment about voting as far as how his council would want him to vote is a clear indication of not understanding the role in which the DDA liaison plays. He is a member of that DDA board, and he is responsible to the citizens within the district, not the city council. That is his objective when he sits on that board, to represent, represent everyone within the district. This is, but, give me a minute to give a little bit of a history lesson. The last time we had a very good, positive, beneficial working relationship with the DDA and the city council was when Councilmember Noel Sawyer served on the DDA board. After elections happened, we decided to switch it up and try something else, even though there was absolutely nothing wrong with that working relationship. And no offense to Councilmember Case, but she was the one that was appointed to the DDA board, and we spent the next year and a half in a head-to-head between city council and DDA. We've now taken almost a year to try and mend that relationship, which is a very good working relationship that Councilmember Zuluaga has formed with the DDA board again. And now, for no reason and without cause, other than what I can see as politics and power, we're trying to upset what has become a very, very good working relationship. It takes a lot to understand DDAs, especially this DDA board. Mr. Councilmember Zuluaga has spent the time to understand it, and again, there is a copacetic relationship between the DDA and city council that has not existed for a number of years since Councilmember Sawyer sat up there. So it is, I'm sorry, I'm going to call this out for what it is. It does not appear to be in the community's best interest to be able to switch this up. It seems like nothing more than ulterior motives running wild. That's what I have to say about this.
And I'd like to provide comment on your comment, Stephanie. I think I do understand, because I sought legal counsel to find out what is the council's role, and it is the council members, the council liaisons' role to represent what the council's vote would be in supporting the businesses. It is not an individual's perspective on voting in supporting the business. So it is a slight change to what you're saying is what I'm offering up. And I did speak to, to council to confirm that the vote is supposed to be what the, the majority of the council members would have voted on that, unless you choose to recuse yourself when you come back, if the issue comes all the way back up to council, in which case you should be recusing yourself, so you're not voting twice.
And I can tell you.
If I might.
This is something.
Stephanie, just one second. Everybody gets to go once, and then you get a second chance. So I'd allow Councilmember Case, then Zuluaga, then you, Ms. Alfieri.
I would just expand to say that the member from this board that is sent, or, or chosen by the city council is the liaison for the city council, not the other way around. They are the liaison to represent the city council on that board, and as I did, and, and know that I was appointed after Noel Sawyer left the council and represented what I felt was the direction from the council in my seat on that board. There were many times I recused myself, because I think it's a conflict for the liaison to vote, and I don't want to argue the statute, it is my belief. It is a conflict for the liaison to be a voting member of that board, because they are elected by the citizens of Woodland Park to serve the city council. And that, they are a liaison from the city council. And I would agree with Rusty that that should be the perspective that's taken by the person sitting in that seat. And it's not to be argumentative, that's just my perspective and what I see in that role. Thank you.
Sure, Councilmember Zuluaga.
Well, I'm, in my experience in that role, or in any of our roles as liaisons, we are the eyes and ears for council to that, to that board. So first and foremost, it's not, at least how I understand liaison, it's not our position to go to Main Street, or go to DDA, or go to some board and come with what council wants. We don't know what council wants. Council's there to be the eyes and ears, as a liaison, we're there to be the eyes and ears of council. Unlike the other boards that I serve on, DDA, I am a voting member. So just as we saw the three new appointed officials take an oath, we all took an oath to the US Constitution, the Colorado Constitution, and the Charter of Woodland Park. And that's a dual hat. In the role of DDA, it's a dual hat. We have just as much responsibility to uphold what we uphold for, at least in my understanding, the same standard that we uphold as council members, we also have to uphold as a board member for the DDA. So it's, it's a very, I take it very seriously. It's very complex. There's a huge amount of misunderstandings surrounding the DDA. And I thought I heard our attorney suggest, Nina suggests, that we have a work session between the council and the DDA. And I think that would go a really long way to diffuse some of what you're seeing. And I again reiterate that I think that it would be destabilizing at this point to unwind all that work for no cause. So that's what I have to say about it. Thank you.
Sure, Councilmember Alfieri.
I think Councilmember Zuluaga covered all of the points I was going to add.
Okay, thank you. Council, anything further? Well, I did ask, oh.
Go ahead.
Who's pointing at you? Go ahead.
Did you have a question?
I have a question for our attorney, but it can wait.
Go ahead.
Do you find the answer I asked to the question?
Your question was, need this vacancy be filled? And I believe it has to be filled.
Okay.
The statute says at least one member shall.
Okay, good. I had asked the question, did we even need a liaison? Because I feel like every time we've put a liaison on council, including Noel, my, the feedback I've always received is they're very frustrated, and they don't like being in the position very much. Because oftentimes, they do feel pressure to vote one way on the DDA side, and pressure to vote another way on the council side. So I see it as kind of being in a position of a rock and a hard place for any council member. But I'm going to let you guys go ahead and decide what it is you want to do, so.
I think, from my perspective, I think the part of the statute that causes the largest problem in this area is the fact that they're a voting member.
Yeah.
I think that is where the problem stems from. Or, not to say that it's a problem, I don't want to characterize it as that. The challenge, if you will, I think is, is more characteristic of what we're talking about, but I, that's, that's the only comment I have right now.
Sure, I think that's an issue for all boards. It's hard to have council be there as a liaison when you should just be the person who communicates the information back and forth. But when you're stuck as a voting member, it puts pressure on you that shouldn't be there, so. Go ahead.
Well, I have taken that on, and I, I wouldn't say that I struggle with that. For me, it's a matter of principle. If you live by the principles that allow you to stand in the same principles you stand on city council in, in the situation with the DDA, the DDA has a charge from us, from the city, and that is to develop the properties that are in the district to prevent light and it, for it to be of value to the city. And so in my, as I research it, study it, look at all the pieces, I don't see it as, I don't see it as a division. I, I'm excited, I'm excited with the relationships that, the, the peacemaking that I've been able to develop. And so it just would be unfortunate to lose that instead of building on it. But it's a voting issue, so whatever you want to choose.
Mayor Protem Labar, may I?
Sure.
So I think it's important to point out that, again, the question of whether or not council should be a voting member on the DDA is simply out of this council's control. It's outlined by Colorado State statute as they apply to downtown development authorities. So that is not something that this council can change. I would point out as well that there have been council members who have struggled with how to represent themselves as a DDA board member who is required by statute to vote versus how they represent themselves as a council member. Keeping in mind that far too often, they have found themselves in the position of being at odds, like you said, between a rock and a hard place, and part of our problem has been, that shouldn't be the case. For far too long, DDA and city council have not worked together for the benefit of this community. Now, again, we have had at times council members who have managed to form a very strong, very good relationship as a council member with that DDA board, and more times than not, those are the council members that have not found themselves between a rock and a hard place, because, again, they find themselves working as a DDA board member and working as a city council member, all working in the same direction for the benefit of the city. It's when we've ended up with council members who are less than agreeable between the two boards that that rock and a hard place situation takes, tends to take on its own life. The statute was not created to intentionally create a conflict of interest between a DDA board and a city council by saying, you have to vote. That's not what they were trying to get at. It should be one where they don't have to feel like they're stuck between which, which way to vote based on which board they sit. It should all be working in the same direction. Councilmember Sawyer was great at that. Councilmember Zuluaga is great at that. And I am cautioning you, I have seen this play out before. I have seen this happen. I have seen how it goes. You change it up for no reason, without cause, and we're going to set ourselves back two or three years in the relationship between the city council and the DDA yet again. There's a number of you up there that continue to talk about how you want the DDA to progress and move forward and get some, something done. And I can assure you, by taking a chance of replacing their city council liaison and ending up in the situations we have before with a less than copacetic working relationship is not the way to go about getting things done on the DDA. Thank you.
Council?
I've heard it mentioned now twice, without cause, and, and maybe my words were not clear, and I'll repeat it then. I am uncomfortable with the manner in which Councilmember Zuluaga has voted, so that is the cause. It is my understanding that we are the governing body. The citizens elect the governing body. The governing body elects a liaison to represent the governing body in votes. The, the purpose of the votes are always to take care of the businesses, but the vote is supposed to be a reflection of the majority of what the council members want. So I am challenging it based on cause, and that's all I need to say. It would be up to a vote going forward, so thank you.
Okay.
Attorney Wilson, what is the definition of ca, for cause in the DDA bylaws?
It's statute.
Well, a statute, but it's defined in the DDA bylaws.
I don't have the DDA bylaws right in front of me, but I do have Section 3125-805-2 in front of me. And whereas the grounds for removal by this body of a member of the DDA board is for cause after proper notice, the representative of the governing body is appointed to serve at, quote, "at the pleasure of the governing body."
Correct.
So it's not a for cause standard in this case.
Right, this, this board appointment is the same as every other one of these board appointments. When someone new is elected to council, we can go over the board positions, and we can ask and negotiate as to who will be the liaisons on each of these boards. We are not removed. We do not need to be removed for cause. Like, I just gave up my PPACG position. You know, you gave up Main Street. It's, this is not a for cause argument in this particular issue, so. So I'm going to go ahead and ask that someone call a motion to vote, or we carry on?
Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion that we appoint Rusty Neal to the liaison of the DDA board.
I need a second, please.
I'll second. Alfieri?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neal? Right, okay, thank you. Zuluaga?
No.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries 3-2.
Okay, now that we're done with appointments, we're going to move on. City Manager Michael Lawson has our interim chief of police that he would like to introduce us to.
Sure, yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm excited to introduce the gentleman that we've selected to be our interim police chief. I say we, because we have our two sergeants in the back, Sergeants McDaniel and Huber, and HR myself, who went through this process, and we, we selected Mr. Steve Hasler here. And as was the case for the finance director last week, per the charter, the city council gets to confirm, or has to confirm, the selection of the police chief. And so I don't know if that necessarily pertains to interim, but I think that's a good, good call. So he is here, he is driven down, and I appreciate him being here. Just a little bit about Steve, and then I'll, I'll have him perhaps say a little bit more. But Steve has bravely agreed to join us, and we, we hope he'll, he'll bring an air of calm and instability in what's been a challenging year, I think we can all agree, and we appreciate that about him. Steve brings over 40 years of experience, both, on both sides of the Atlantic. Steve started his career in the London area for the constabulary there. I say that right?
Constabulary.
Oh, geez, not in close. That. And started his US career here in Manitou Springs, just down the road in the 90s. And he's served 24 years as chief in smaller cities in Colorado, in Erie, and Lone Tree, and Elizabeth. And he's received many honors for his work, as has his departments over the years. He's also served as the president of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police. And he was recommended to us. He came to us through recommendation of the current association president. We, we think he'll be a good fit. He's friendly but firm, is what we've heard and what we've found to be true. He's a proponent of community policing and being visible and active in the community. And so I, I don't know, what'd I miss? What else would you like to share?
This is all right. Yeah, well, thank you, madam, Mayor Protem and city council for the opportunity to come down to Woodland Park. As you may have read by my resume, when I first came to the States, I was employed by the Manitou Springs Police Department as a young patrol officer, and my patrol partner lived in Woodland Park. And I spent many weekends in Timber Lane at barbecues and cookouts. So it really is a trip down memory lane to come back here and help you guys out. I don't know if you want me to give you a full bio. Or if you have specific questions of me, I'm just very blessed and excited to be here.
Council, any questions or comments?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
And it goes back to kind of a Reagan saying, trust, but. And it goes back to kind of a Reagan saying, trust but verify. I've read all of your resume, and I do trust the people that have interviewed you, but I just want to hear kind of from yourself. We, we've had a very unfortunate situation with our, our police department. Can you just talk a little bit about your experiences in going into a situation? What, what kind of the question that I always see at an interview is, give me the worst situation you've always had, that you've had to fix in your, your entire career. If you were to pick one, and just what were the techniques you used to fix that?
Well, it's a, that's, that's a very difficult question to answer. However, I'll give it, I'll give it a go. Every police department, well, when I went to Erie as a chief, it was in turmoil. And when I went to Lone Tree as a chief, that was where there was nothing, I had to build it from scratch. And then when I went to Elizabeth, there was turmoil. So I've had experience in dealing with turmoil in police departments, unfortunately. And as I was saying to the city manager, you know, I don't want to be negative about anything that's gone in the past with Woodland Park Police Department because it's a, it's a wonderful police department. I just feel that there's been some leadership issues and some decision-making issues that have affected the situation at the moment. The first thing we have to do is fix inside the department. And when I say fix inside, I mean regain the trust of our police officers. Make them feel safe in that police department, in that police building. If you fix the inside, the outside fixes itself. And I've looked online, and I haven't seen any criticism of the police department from the community. So I think the guys and girls are doing a great job outside. All we need to do to, to set this thing off is get them to re-trust their leadership in the police department, and that's starting Wednesday.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. You've, you've touched on what I was going to ask you about. So I see you've come from turmoil to scratch to turmoil. Now you're coming to turmoil again. So the area that I want to address with you is police department morale. Can you talk a bit about how you have taken a turmoil and created, and what you've done as far as the morale there in terms of that fixing on the inside, as you call it?
Right. Well, I mean, it depends what turmoil you have. When I went to Erie, the department was split. There was two sergeants, and one side was for this sergeant, the other side was for that sergeant. And you're never going to fix that till one of those sergeants goes. And so what happened was, and let, let me just say, you know, I've never fired anyone in my life. They always fire themselves for some reason. But after we've done the initial assessment, the sergeant decided he didn't want to continue with the department, off he went. And then the people that followed him didn't really want to be with the other sergeants, so off they went. And then we had a, a plain piece of paper to start rebuilding. And it comes, morale comes down to trust and, and the feeling of value. I mean, the guys in Woodland Park PD have gone through some pretty trying months of past. And so they've felt slapped around, and we've got to get them to get their pride back, to feel valued, and to trust their leadership. And that's just, that's just a matter of communication, and let them know that things are going to be slightly different now than they were before.
Great, I look forward to seeing how you do it.
Thank you.
So I have a quick question, which we're all apparently on the same mindset. How do you, in, in a nutshell, not, you know, not the written document, but how do you go about earning that leadership trust? I mean, what's your?
Right. Well, it's, when you, when you, when you gain respect, it shouldn't be through fear.
Okay.
It's through leading by example. And, you know, I, I found out as a young policeman in England that strangely enough, people didn't want to be on the day shift, they wanted to be on the night shift, others wanted to be on the swing shift. And when you ask them why, they, they used to say, I don't want to be around the bosses, you know? And it seemed to me, as I progressed up the chain to become a boss, that that's a bad thing to have, that kind of mentality. Because outside, and I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying Woodland Park is then an equity and, and, you know, a bad place to be, but outside that police station, each one of those police officers have their, have their spidey sense on, right? They've got to stay safe, and it can get quite dangerous at times. So if they don't feel comfortable in that police station, when they go outside, they're going to be frightened to make the right decision. They're going to be second guessing themselves. When they second guess themselves, that's what gets them into trouble. So you have to make the police station home and comfortable, and then want to be around their bosses. And the only way you can do that is create that relationship with them. Go out there, work with them, and see you're out there for them, not against them. That takes a little bit of time, but hopefully we can do it quicker than likely to here because that's what needs to be done right off the bat.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything further?
I'd just like to say thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm.
Steve Hasler.
Chief Hauser, as the.
Hassel.
For.
Hasler.
Hasler. I'm sorry, I did read your, your bio, and all the schools and everything, I didn't memorize the last name, and I apologize. I'll get to know you as we work together. But I would like to make a motion to confirm your appointment to the interim chief of police for Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Second.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And with your permission, Mayor Protem, I'm prepared to administer the oath of office.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And while, I'll just add, while Suzanne is, is getting into position. But I'm sorry. The, the permanent police chief timeline likely to take around four to six months. So we're hoping around the end of the year, we would have a, a permanent person in here. We'll do a full national recruitment process. So just want to set that expectation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, Stephen Hasler. You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of interim police chief.
Of interim police chief.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Thank you very much for being here. All right, this meeting is adjourned.